Evening, welcome to our board work session for May 25th, 2022. To begin, we'll open by having a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are going to go straight to our agenda, so I will be turning the time over to Superintendent Corde.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. I'm going to share a slide deck for those who are online as well as the board. These slides are in your packet as well, so let me get this up and going. Okay, good evening, thank you for being here, Board, it's great to see you. Tonight, we have a work session that we had planned on having post-election. And to start tonight, I would like to have a moment of silence as we think about events in our country, particularly yesterday in Texas, also in Buffalo, New York. And if we can have a moment of silence, and then we'll launch into our meeting. All right, thank you. I think it's worth discussing, this is actually the not to dwell on this, but yesterday, the school shooting in Texas brought with it a range of emotions for many of us. This is the 27th school shooting in the country this year. And for me personally, was especially difficult and poignant with the failure of the bond. As we had talked about making investments around safety and security. And we're here to talk about the bond, and we'll talk about that today and talk about priorities and talk about next steps. I just want to open it up to the board, if there are any thoughts or members have or any comments relative to the events of the week.
Just with regard to the bond election, I've seen comments about people say, ah, it was a bad idea, the timing was bad, that sort of thing. I've been through a lot of elections, and it's often a mystery as to how things came out, why things came out. From my observation, I thought that this bond was very competently put together, very competently put forward. And it's simply a mystery to me as to why it did not succeed. And I don't, I don't think there's any room for second guessing or or having doubts about, about the way that the bond campaign was done.
I appreciate that, we will have some specific time to talk about the post-election here in just a few minutes.
Yeah, I'm glad, we, we will, because I think it should be separated, personally. Yesterday was terrible. But how many terribles are we going to have to have? It's just one thing after another, and what I'm really deeply concerned about is last two, three years with COVID. It's created, you know, our, our kids, doesn't matter if they're elementary kids, high school kids. This COVID being shut up at home, and parents and staff, has not been healthy. We have a huge shortage, mental health people, folks. And I'm not an expert, I think it's gonna get really awful. We're gonna see more of this stuff, we don't get a handle on it, and I don't know how we're gonna handle it. I looked at these teachers, educators that are in classrooms. I wanted to read something that my daughter wrote. And I can paraphrase, it basically, it was, you know, when I, when I'm driving home today, I'm thinking about the 28 kids, fifth graders that are in my classroom, and their families. How I have to protect them. And then she talks about her babies at home need her, you know who the first responders really are? They're the teachers in the damn classroom that we can't protect. I've heard people say, we can spend $40 billion to Ukraine, but we can't take care of our safety of our schools. It has to stop. And when we get into, you know, it's just gone through my mind, those poor little kids laying there bleeding out, needing their moms and dads, and there's nobody there to help them. I mean, they had a, an officer, resource officer, school officer on campus, and he tried to stop it. The kid got into, in, through an unlocked door, barricaded himself in that classroom and just shot him up. There are kids they couldn't even recognize. It shouldn't be happening. And so, when we get to one, two, three, I'm gonna get kind of radical tonight on what I'm gonna suggest. We can't keep waiting for bond issues to pass to not get these schools secure, I know, I know we've done a lot of stuff, but we we need to do a whole lot more, we gotta figure it out. My heart's just broken, it's just, it shouldn't happen.
Yeah, as we move on, I think a couple of reasons that the bond failing was hard were because our motivation behind it really and truly was the safety and security of our kids. And for us in our district, that's about securing campuses, and that's about getting kids in safer buildings. We could have an earthquake here, and we're gonna lose kids. We're gonna have kids buried in rubble if we don't do something about the Heritage Building, and that will be our community on the news. And it's heartbreaking, and it's hard as a board member, and because it's my kids. They're there every day. I also just want to echo what Rod said, which is those kids did have two adults with them, and they both lost their lives, and that was their teachers. So, I just, sorry, want to thank our teachers who I know every day take our kids through the drills, they're the ones that do the active shooter drills with their kids. They're the ones that think about how they're gonna keep their kids safe every day. And I am incredibly grateful for our administration teams and our safety team, and the secretaries and all of our support staff that I know in any emergency will put their lives on the line on behalf of our students, and that is an emotional weight they carry. And it's important that they know they have our support. Because besides teaching, reading, and writing, and math, and science every day, they worry about keeping our kids safe. And I hope they know that our thoughts are with them, and we're grateful for that work that they do every day here in our district with our kids.
Yeah, I think this was just a wake-up call for all of us across the country to make some shifts in priorities. Any parent is, is, I think it's been affected knowing that our kids are, are our most valued treasure. And we want to do whatever we can to have them with us for the longevity of their life. So, I you know, I think it just opened my eyes even more. I, working in the schools, I saw the need, and I saw the holes in the security. And I thought, gosh, I, I wonder if this is gonna be okay, but I didn't know if I could do anything about it. But then when we worked on the bond, I thought, well, yeah, this is what we need to do in this area. So, I think we will, we are gonna work on doing what we can do on our part here to, to seal up some of those holes. You know, we may not have the funding that we desired, but we will do what we can to, to work on that safety, it is becoming a much higher priority than it maybe was.
Thank you, I appreciate that and echo those sentiments. I wrote a message to our parents and staff today and just reiterated my belief that every kid and every adult in our schools is entitled to and deserves to come to school safe. As a parent, when I drop my kid off, and my expectation of other parents is we have local parents or responsibility for these kids, is our responsibility is to get them back at least as good as they came to us. Should be better, we're working on every day, and this is, has reminded us that there's, there's work to do in this area. That being said, I do want to talk for a few minutes tonight about some of the things that we are doing. I know in speaking to several board members over the last 24 hours, and I put myself in this as well. We stop and wonder, you know, what we can do more, and that's what we need to be doing, how do we expand our efforts there? But I want to talk a little bit about some of the things happening that are currently in place, and also some of the things that we are planning to do and have been planning to do over the last several months. So, here you have this before, I'll just run through these real quick, I invited our district safety coordinator Ed BRL, who's here with us, and that we hired Ed in 2020 in an effort to really prioritize our efforts around safety, to be organized and not hope that things could be safe, but to have someone with Ed's background and experience in law enforcement and working on SWAT and working with children. Ed has a really unique skill set that benefits our students, not just in hard-nan exteriors, but also in helping support students that are in crisis, and and so that's been a a practice and a, and a position that's been important for us. We've developed a district mental health team. We've actually made several investments in mental and behavioral health, more needed. We've systematized some of our work around safety for the event of an emergency, distribution of emergency buckets, and making sure if, if there is an issue in a school and that school is locked down while law enforcement's working on an investigation or an active threat, that students can be there for an extended period of time. The boards approved the addition of a security cameras. We've worked on fencing at the middle schools, developed a emergency operations team to look at our emergency operations protocols. We do hold monthly in 2022, in case you don't know, that's one of our kids, they're very used to active shooter drills, earthquake drills, fire drills, this is part of education and the century. And so, we, we work on those once a month, and we've increasingly worked on investigating crimes and also supporting victims as well, and tracking those crimes, looking at data. For this next year on our budget, as you may remember in the budget process, we have allocated additional funding at elementary school for fencing, that's gonna happen this summer. We are hiring a district safety officer, although that sounds like an addition, this actually is really comes as a result of Roseburg Police Department unable to fill the SRO positions. And so, we're backfilling with a district safety officer, that position's posted. We're still, we're tuning in the, and fine tuning the emergency communication and reunification guidance. And we've also upgraded or in the process of upgrading intercon systems where needed at elementary schools. So, there are some things that we are doing. Clearly, we need to make more investments in this area, but I thought it was important to talk about some of the things the board has approved, looking forward. Absolutely, yep. You'll need a, you'll need a mic down there, maybe you can
How tall are the fences, are they gonna be, four feet, five feet, don't cut it?
Oh, we were, we were looking at six to seven feet.
Why I asked, three or four foot?
Someone's can scale it.
So, we're gonna have one resource officer?
Currently have one resource officer.
We're gonna have zero.
No, we, we currently have one, we had two. And we currently, this year, are working with one, and we'll have, our hope is to have one next year.
So, that would be
Our hope would be to have two, but it looks like we'll have one.
So, this is what I've been planning, so let's say we have one that's at the high school. We have one that's doing something at Fremont. And we have a shooting going on at Winchester, I mean, we have two is, is nothing. So, I, I'm just throwing that out. We need more than two, so anyway.
The issue, I don't know, Ed, if you want to address this, but I mean, we've worked with RPD quite a bit on that, if you want to talk about working with Chief Upenstein on this.
I'm sorry, were you asking me, Jared?
And I'm, I'm not picking on Winchester, it's just, you know, where I live, and we see C shooting, and everything, so it's kind of got close to home. We do have the state police just down the road, but, I mean, if you don't have security people, somebody on every campus, and I don't know if this is gonna happen. Time somebody gets there, and we're not following protocols, and we don't have all of our doors locked like we're supposed to be, it's too late. It's too late. Tell the families and the kids from yesterday, you know, it's too late. We gotta figure out a way, I don't know what the magic pill is, but we've gotta have somebody on campus.
Have a mass shooting like this, you're gonna have every
lives, I know that, but we still lost, at least we lost too many. And you understand that we think, the people that we have working for it are wonderful, so if I say something, it's not gonna be I'm, I'm not, not gonna be, or you are, it's just, we gotta do something different.
Yeah, and I'll just mention that, you know, working with police, they've, you know, we have several open positions in our own district, we haven't been able to fill. I'm talking to Dr. Weber about RHS next year, and we've got positions that were concerned that we've never had a shortage quite like this. We have positions to fill, and the police department is not immune to this. And we're working, I mean, this has really been a national issue around police shortages, and we're working to make sure that relocating and being here in Douglas County is attracted lots of people, so we can have the services we need. Yes.
It's just not it's our educators, our teachers, I mean, think about it, do I want to be a first responder? Do I want to have to have that responsibility every single day? I don't know if we're losing people, that's one reason why they're not getting an education, but it could be.
Yeah, well taken, yep. So, let me move on from here, I wanted to talk a little bit about we're gonna talk about the bond tonight, this is the intent of the meeting, you know, what our plan is, whether the bomb was successful or not, and obviously it wasn't, so I wanted to give a little bit of history. Just in terms of where we got here, at least in, in my time here, this is year three for me. Is a reminder for, for the, the whole group here, the whole board, the district received a TAP grant from the state of Oregon to do long-range facilities planning, that happened in that 2017 to 2019 timeframe. In which there were, there was a, a deep assessment on the condition of the facilities and what the, what a long-term plan could be. Following this process, after I was hired in or came on board in July, we, we had talked a little bit about this, and then in earnest, the board made the decision to move forward on a bond in November of 2019, and the board identified some key projects and that they thought were important, many of these were safety-related. And all of them actually had a foundation in, in safety and security in renovation and repair. And that bond was on the ballot in May 2020 and was narrowly defeated. We got back to the drawing board and hadn't forgot about the investments we needed. We started a little different process that was community-driven and led by the citizens of our community in 2021. And sought a wider group of insight from our community through polling. And that bond, as we know, was not successful. I didn't want to talk just for a little bit about recap of what the bond in 2022, and then we'll talk about, you know, some, getting some insights from the board on, on maybe why that wasn't successful. But I do think it's important to do a recap of what the categories and projects were in this bond. The bond was $154 million bond in three key areas. So, we had educational improvements, looking at efficiencies, systems and energy efficiencies, as well as health, safety and security. So, the bond package that was presented was $30.8 million for educational facilities improvements with all our elementaries and middle schools. We had an investment in career and technical ed, the replacement and rebuild of the Heritage Building at Roseburg High School, or the Old Main. And five multipurpose facilities at elementary schools that do not have dedicated gym space that could serve as community shelters and access points for the community. $37 million for district-wide improvements, those would be air quality, filtration, roofing, plumbing and major systems. And then health and safety, security interests, those are what we commonly call vestibules, which would drive all of the traffic through a single access point. Controlled access, being able to lock down buildings with technologies allows a lockdown to happen either in an office or even not the office, might be through a phone system that you could secure a building. Elementary school playground improvements, replacements of outdoor athletic fields, and drop-off improvements at elementary schools. In terms of this review, which we'll talk about tonight, which we said this is what we were gonna mostly focus on tonight. As you, as you likely know, 6,543 of our voters within our school district voted yes for the bond, it was 43.51%. 8,495 voted no. I made a couple of quick notes about that, but we'll just turn the time over to the board to if you have any insights or comments about the bond campaign review, and then we'll move into next steps.
One of the main things that I've heard afterwards, and I kind of thought during the whole process was we set our sights high, we know, we, we had these small, medium and large, and during the polling process, we were told that the largest amount polled the best. I don't think that was an accurate representation of what the community actually felt, looking back on it. I think that may have been us reaching a little too much. The 2020 bond was so close to passing, and then to add another, what is, time and a half of that on to it, I think was going in the wrong direction, I think that if we were a bit closer to that amount that we'd asked for in 2020, we could have had possibly a better result, but that's just my opinion.
We, we put this, well, we asked for this community-driven process. We did the two surveys. And so, at times, you have, you're gonna think that they're accurate, you know? And, and, and it's really hard when you ask the community to spend all this, I bought a group, spent all this time, many of them worked on the one, you know, 2020, to not really enforce that, enforce it, and support that. So, I don't apologize that that was, we went out with that amount, personally. You're, could be very well be right that, you know, it may have passed at nine annoying, but I don't think so, I don't think if it was a dollar, it would have passed. Because the economy, I mean, it's hit a lot of people. I still have faith in this community, by the way. There were, I received more comments than I ever have from non-public school parents and grandparents that they were going to vote no. Because of critical race theory, I'm still trying to figure that, where it's at, I hope someday somebody can show me. And just gender identification, I mean, you've heard it, you've all probably heard it. Parent choice. You know, why do I want to support public education when my child is going to a non-public school or homeschool? I, I get that, but that's what we have. And in Oregon, the only way we can really take care of buildings is either the district borrow money, which I don't know if we can do that, or you run a bond. So, I get it, I mean, we had COVID in the first one, and we had the economy, and things are just not good right now. And so I think it was just kind of a combination of things. I didn't really appreciate the sly slanderous, in my opinion, remarks that some of the Scott on letters that we wrote, I thought, really, grow up. I mean, I didn't appreciate a board member from another district knocking us before, you know, I'm thinking, are you kidding me? I'm not gonna get a name to things, but just, it all just piled up. And but, what it comes down to, it comes down to the voters. And we shall see what negative impact it has on our community. And I don't know when you run another one, we're gonna talk about it, but I I can tell you, there are probably some on this board saying, I'm not running another one, some on the board, or there's probably some, you know, I don't know if we'll get the same. You won't get the members of the pack, many of those will not come back and do it again, I don't think. They've done it two, two times, they're wore out. And they beat it pretty good, too, so that's the process we have, see what happens.
I've said lots. I've I've let my feelings be known in a public forum, and I'm saddened by the outcome of the bond, but I'm not sure that's helpful. I think we need to figure out you know, yes, but what's next? Yes, it didn't pass, but now what's next? And you know, in the event, in light of the events in Texas, we have to do some things. You know, in light of the economy, we still have to do some things. In light of, you know, instability in employment and things like that, we still have to do some things to make this the best we can. I mean, there's so much misinformation about how Oregon Public Schools get their money. And the only way to improve buildings is through a bond, like Rod said, or to borrow money. People don't realize that 85% of our budget is tied up in staffing. If we need money, we're gonna have to cut staffing and cut programs and cut other things that people value. And those are hard decisions to make, but sometimes those decisions need to be made, even if they're hard. You know, the Heritage Building could be condemned pretty easily. There's some issues that are pretty glaring, and Director Larson is correct in that, you know, if there was an earthquake, I pray there would be at night when nobody was there, or something like that, because we might have at night when nobody was there or something like that, because we might have 200 plus students and teachers dead. And that could be bad. You know, we need more secure buildings. Because what happened in Texas could happen in Roseburg very easily. We're not immune to those type of things. And just because the majority of voters did not like the bond or vote for the bond that was put forth, doesn't mean we, we can't, we gotta, we gotta come up with a plan B. And if that's cutting big programs, then I think we need to be prepared to do that. That's hard. But that's the reality right now.
I don't, are you getting any feedback from the pack? People as far as are they not wanting to go to the board again, or not, not wanting to? You know, we haven't had three strikes yet. We're not out yet. Maybe they'll give us one more, you know, one more shot.
Yeah, I can, I, I mean, I, I think the pack has been amazing. I mean, we have, we have so many people who have been so supportive and donating their time, their skills, their money to help get this passed. And actually I had the pack, they're, they're going to join us next meeting to do a little bit of debrief and I, I feel strongly that their, their commitment to this, because it's, their commitment to this was before, of course, the shooting, but their commitment is, is really about a better place. It's about a better community. And it's not just about securing buildings, but it is that. It's not just about retaining programs, but it's that too. It's if we, if I was really impressed with the wide level of support by the business community across all sectors, really. Even in this economy about people saying, we see why we need this. We need this for workforce. We need this for retaining and recruiting and growing and developing. I, I feel strongly that those same sentiments are going to exist. In fact, maybe almost accelerated in an economy like this. I'm, I'm confident we'll have a strong group of people that want to help pass this, pass this bond in the future. But we do have some people that I think are also balancing the frustration that it didn't pass. And also wondering like, what could we have done? I've talked to several of our pack members who put a lot of time and effort into this and were saddened by the results. But I also know that's a group that's resilient and they, they are going to stand by the board. And when the board says, we're interested in this, we will have a group of people in our community that step up to help us get that done.
Yeah, I, to summarize, I would say you can't vote away the need. And maybe Andrew's right, and maybe we just need to prioritize, which I think is part of what we're going to do tonight and decide what can we do now? Okay, it didn't pass, but what can we do now? And that might mean we do another smaller bond with some really key, like really just tuned in to the most vital things. But these needs still exist and they're very real. And it is hard because the, the financing of education is a really complicated issue, especially when we were getting all the different grant money and people would say, well, didn't you get all this federal money? Yeah. And it all came with little tags. This is for this only, you know, and it was, and it is hard for people to know, but we need to just be so clear that the only way we can do this, there's two ways Brandon said, there's two ways. One is we cut teachers and programs. Or we get a bond passed. That's it. That's the two ways that we can start putting up enough fencing, build vestibules and replace. You know, we start with the worst, the building in the worst condition, but get buildings that our kids are safe in. That's it. That's the only way to do it. And so I think we have to move forward and keep at it until we can get something to at least keep our kids safe. I mean, I would love to see educational improvements and things like that. But we, we've got to do something. Doing nothing is not an option.
So I appreciate that. We're going to, now we're, we're kind of that spot tonight that we, that we need, we need to be at, which is really what are our next steps? So at your tables, there's a couple of things we're going to, I'm going to launch the board into an activity here. Let me set this up for you real quick. So you have a 11 by 17 sheet here. That great, if you write on it, it's perfect. This is meant to just these, these were, or these were our capital improvement investments from the 2020 bond listed, also with the price tag on those. 2022 bond. Yep. Did I say 2020? Sorry, 2022. You also have a list of corresponding numbers here, one being the number one priority in your opinion as a board member. You'll notice that each of these nine items are located around the room here. I want you to take a little bit of time and what you're going to be doing now is I'm going to cut you loose to do a little bit of thinking. You may not need to think a lot about this, about how you would priority rank each of these investments that were in the 2022 bond and a priority rank. You cannot put one on two things. You'll go one through nine. I also provided you with the Eisenhower matrix. 34th president, I believe. Is that right? 34th President of the United States, five-star general. But this matrix actually is, I use at times to, to try to delineate what's urgent and what's important. And this could be helpful to you if you, if you're trying to figure out, you know, what you would prioritize. That's available for you. Don't need to use it, but it's there for you. I'm going to go ahead and give the board time to rank order these. I'd like you to use the stickers on the back. You can take them off if you don't agree with yours, but you cannot take anyone else off up there. We'll then do a little tally at the end and we'll do a little gallery walk. So you can, I'm interested to see what you noticed, what you wondered with this. We're then going to move into after we do this prioritization activity into a question. I don't want you to think too much about this yet, but the question is ideas on how to move forward. So two separate activities. The first one right now is prioritizing each board member, only board members have these. Each board member prioritizing these nine capital improvement projects that were on the 2022 bond. Any questions?
I
Thank you for your participation on that. We did have one asterix, which we had eight up here and six over here, but those have been averaged accordingly. It's okay. So what I'd like, if you haven't had a chance to just kind of walk around, they've been average lowest number as highest priority. And so I'll get those tallies real quick. I guess we can kind of see those here. The first, the lowest number I see here are safety and security entrances. At all schools, 1.42. Heritage is next at 2.43. And then district wide improvements, two and a half. So that averaged out, this was people's almost close to number one. Closer to two than this, but those two are close. And the third number, I think there's a little bit of a jump to, is it 4.85? And which one is that? My old eyes can't tell here. Education and facilities improvements at all schools. Okay, thoughts from the board on on how the collective, so individually that work was done, but thoughts collectively on the collective boards. Prioritizations.
It's where exactly the top three we're gonna land. So now, and I like this process and I think I think the board's pretty much, I mean, we at average, but consensus wise, if you look at the numbers, I think we're, except this. I'm not saying you guys are oddball, I'm just saying, that's an outlier, I think, but I'm not surprised.
I think, I think this reflects what, if we had the, because Andrew and I were on that community, community bond committee. And I think if you brought them here, you would probably get the same top three. Don't you agree?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we ended up with, this same exercise, same result. These were the top three things.
Yeah. So I think what that is, that's reflecting, there are a lot of things that really do need to happen for our schools. And we're not saying any of these are unimportant, or they wouldn't have been on, you know, what maybe some people don't understand is that and I heard people say this, wow, this seems like a lot of money. And the new, to build a brand new high school, a six A high school, a brand new six A high school, if we were to just say, we're scrapping it, we're starting over. What had Ben spent?
About 300 million.
300 million dollars. For a brand new school. So, and then when people say, well, why don't we build, what do you think a brand new elementary school would cost?
About 40 to 50 million.
Okay, 40 to 50 million, but that solves problems at one building. You know, and so what do you do with all the other ones? And, and that's what some of the community bonds got into. But I think what this reflects is the needs versus wants, right? Like, there are some things that really, really need to happen. And then there's some things that would be very, very nice to have happen, but there are some surreal some real needs. And I think that's what we see reflected in here.
I think on that same note, even the stuff, everything we put in the bond, it wasn't a whole lot of wants. I mean, it was prioritized by the list of needs. I mean, the three, our top three things here, 85 million dollars. So if we would have trimmed it down, everything, this would have been the smallest amount that we would have tried to go for. These are the most important, but everything in the, on the paper here was a need, not a want, in my personal opinion. There, there was another 150 million dollars worth of wants out there that we had to shuffle off and push to the side that we couldn't put on here.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree. Everything was a need. These are like, I don't know, desperate needs. I don't know what the word is. They're desperate needs.
I think the, yeah, the top three things we have here, we need to figure out what we can do, what the possibilities are that we can do on our own without the help of the community, or is it possible to crowdsource a fundraiser? Is that legal? I mean, can we do a GoFundMe page and say, all you people who voted yes for the bond, why don't you throw your tax money into here and we can actually do these three things?
Yeah, I mean, the, we, we do see, it's, it's, that's not a, that's not a practice that I've seen happen in Oregon. I, I think there is, could be some legality to that. I think about the investment, some of the entrepreneurs in Oregon have made to say, pick on University of Oregon or another institution, right? So there, there is that alternative way we see public buildings being funded by entrepreneurs, right? But for the 99.9%, I'm aware of, it does come through that capital improvement bond process.
I wish there's way, there is a way, because we get names and address, but the folks have made suggestions, such as, why don't we fundraise? I don't know how many millions of candy bars or pepper sticks, but maybe they would be willing to come and run that program for us. I was also thinking, you know, Phil Knight had an aunt that lived in Roseford. He probably really spent some summer, you know, the board has been, and I'm not being smart, I'm just, I guess, the board has been hesitant about having buildings, people name buildings, but maybe look at that, you know, we had suggestions at Ford Foundation, they generally don't do buildings for things, but for the tribe. So there, there are things out there. But is this the time where we can say what we would do if we were king for the day?
The, I mean, I think so, we, we've, what I've heard from the board, just to recap, and I want to see if that's what people have heard here. It's really, I mean, the consensus of this board really did align with three major projects. And so, I mean, I would consider, unless there's debate here, that this board has an interest in all of these things as being important, but urgent, those things on that, those top three lists. Okay.
So heritage really needs to go. And an easy fix to me is we close it, it's dead. We see, we count, I understand there are some empty classrooms, you figure out how many classrooms we have, and then we go enter into agreement to lease some modules. And have the module for, I don't know where you would put the weight room, but can't leave that open, the closed building, you can't leave the weight, that's what I would do if I just came for the day. But the first thing I do on safety and security is we do have so many put away, that's for money. And I did, I'm not advocating this, but I did walk into that Cheryl Kim, the district borrowing money. And she says this, this borrowing money is probably not the best thing to do, but at that point, it's going to have to be a combination of borrowing money. Before we, I don't, I don't want to cut programs, so that's we absolutely have to, I think we should look at that. And then the airflow. I've heard that depending on who you read and talk to, that in order for the air to be good, it needs to clear three times an hour minimum. But in a school setting, five times an hour. So I don't know how much, and you can't even get these darn units right now. I don't think, unless it's changed, but we could do those units, if we had to, to just get us by. Do we have any of those units in our?
We are, we've currently been doing the engineering work to determine how to get that five to one ratio, and what engineering would look like across a wide range of different buildings.
I guess I was talking about standalone units, just do something.
Yeah, we, we, we did invest in essentially HEPA purification units. Many classrooms have two, but it's, they're they're really insufficient for, for the need. And this is, this is not necessarily even COVID. This is, this is wildfire season. This is how to exchange that air for quality air. So this, just to be clear, this is the time, we want to call it king for the day, queen for the day, princess for the day, knight of the day, whatever you want to call it. And the idea here is this, process wise. We've done the prioritization activity. I need to get from the board ideas on how to proceed. And then what I will do is at the board's direction, if you say you want these by the end of the week, or if you want these next week, we schedule another meeting. I will come with some proposals, if you will. One might involve borrowing money. One might involve a capital bond campaign in November or May with certain things. A combination of different things with some pros and cons to deliver to the board based on the suggestions tonight. So I think throwing all those suggestions out is what we want to have happen that I, on how the board would like to proceed with these priority projects.
If I was king for the day, I had my choice, I would say we spend all the S R money we have, we borrow if we have to, but we, we get the best of your entries at every place that we can. And we do that immediately as fast as we can. And then secondarily, we put it back to the voters again, in either November or May, we say, we are going to close down the old main building. You have the opportunity to fund its replacement, or everyone will be going to modular buildings, because it's not a safe building.
And we will have to probably do some cuts. I mean, it's you know, there would be probably also, if we don't get a bond passed, and we have to, you know.
To be clear, I mean, we'll, I'll, I can lay this out for you, but all of these ideas have, have costs. And so, but that's for the board, tonight is really to get the board's ideas out there. And I'll come back with three or four different proposals.
But I'm with Andrew, I think we go again. With 80.
Make it small enough and we make it specific for something. And if you do it that way, we're going to shut the building down next year, regardless if this passes or not. You know, and you kind of put it in their hands and say, this is, this is it. There is no other option. It has to go, or somebody, we pay to refit it.
The old main, we think is dangerous.
We know it's dangerous.
We probably could not close it and have replacement, oh, we have some empty classrooms. But we probably could not have replacement modular, not very fancy classes, classrooms next fall. I don't know. But I'm worried about
I find it strange that, you know, the seniors who for their senior prank, they put up a bunch of signs that the, the heritage building was closed for demolition. I mean, kids are sometimes funny, and sometimes they're poignant, and sometimes, sometimes they teach us a lot. And they were all three of those in that moment.
Well, it's kind of interesting, the old main is the same age as the Scottsburg Bridge, which is, the replacement is open today and it's going to be torn down.
Yeah.
Bridges, less complicated than a building like that, I think.
And to the point of the main, I think, one, one, the old main, the interesting thing, that there was a significant difference between the 2020 bond and the 22 bond. And when the old main came up about replacement or even remodel, there was a significant amount of people who were opposed to that idea in 2020. That really was not the case in 2022. There were a few people who want to preserve the history. But I think when they saw the renderings of what it could be, and how that history could be woven into a new design, that really was not a point of contention in this bond. To the point of the old main or heritage building, both the suggestions you laid out in terms of portables and either vacating that or rebuilding that is really the same path forward. You're going to have to have replacement spots for kids to go when the bond passes. And if the, if the voters elect to do that. So again, this is the idea today is to get suggestions. I will put these together. And, and we have a, we have a meeting scheduled for June 8th. If that meeting's too far away from the board, and we want to get another meeting before that, I'll work with the chair, vice chair on that for the proposals that I can put together for the board. So other, other ideas, suggestions on how to proceed.
Jill, can you tell me like, how many classes are actually held in that building now? 19 classrooms.
And so each of those are
Yeah. So if we had to get modulars, you said we have a few open classrooms.
The common set were, we have part of the nursing lab in there. There's three good sized classrooms in there, possibly four. Some thoughts, I've been around with some ideas, we have some, classes like those before Jar, that
So, so maybe if we could see what pared down, you know, how much space would we need modular wise? You know, to rent or, or whatever temporary thing we're going to be able to do. That would be great.
Again, I mean, I think we conservatively have 120 classes a day in that building. And so, I mean, these proposals, when I bring these back to you, and I can work with Jill and others to calculate these out, whether it's borrowing money or moving toward modulars. Again, that'll have a cost benefit that the board will need to consider, but the idea today is to get, to get ideas on how to proceed. Okay, the other thing we'd want to consider, now that the board has a recommendation now, or I can bring this at our next meeting, is when we look at servicing debt, if we'd indeed borrow, really the question, rates are relatively volatile right now, but I'd want to get an idea from the board. Are we thinking about a 10-year, a 20-year, or 30-year? That might be helpful. I could bring all the scenarios. But on those, you might have more than a few options, maybe overwhelming to look at all the options. So if there's a general consensus on deferring that debt, I, I actually, if you're asking my opinion, and we can get Cheryl on here if we need to, I would, I would steer away from anything over 10 years personally. I think that's a, that's a pretty significant risk, but we can get the cost per million if the board wants to at 10 years. And of course, we have to be able to service that debt, and shorter the amortization rate, obviously the higher the cost, but if the board has a suggestion on that would be for, so that would be for the, the loan option. So if there's a consensus from the board tenure, look at that, that option when we present those, okay? So the other thing we can talk about is when, when we do talk about bond options, we, we have November, that has pros and cons. It moves quicker. We have May of 23. I don't know, I, I don't know if this board has an interest of thinking beyond May of 23. I have the impression that that's not an option for the board. So I can look at those two options, but what we could also do is look at how to structure the debt of a bond. And this could help voters who are nervous about inflation or rising prices, because how we sell the bonds also makes a difference in what the rate is.
So are you talking about, let's say, two questions? I'm king for the day right now. We've got to do the safety. Now, start now. So I mean, so you get that in, that should not be predicated on, on my pay. That stuff needs to get done now. When I say now, you know, we know, obviously we can take up to nine months. The bond, so let's say we went out for 75 million. And it's, so it's 96. So is there a way that we can figure where we actually, we, the first year, we went only 30 cents?
We can, we can, this.
And then you had 30 cents the second year, and then you had 30 cents the third year. So is it still a 20-year, or does it stretch out to 20 each?
Well, you, yeah, so what you can, you, I mean, how we structure the bond debt, and Cheryl's happy to join in here if she wants to, is, I mean, you're, what you're going to do is you're going to definitely, if you can get the awesome match, you need to sell at least that amount of, those amount of bonds in the first six months. So we would anticipate we'd have that 5.8 to 6 million dollars if we went out again. There is some work to do on another tap grant, by the way, because I think Cheryl can clarify, I think if we went May, and Cheryl, if you're on, you can jump in, but we, we do need to do another long range facilities plan to apply for the awesome grant. So that's some work, that's fine. We can structure the bond debt where we, we sell bonds at a different, so we sell bonds that, that, that's the direct, essentially what you're doing is you're levying that tax of the bonds you sold, and that drops the rate. You know, there's not, there's not, oftentimes, if you were to sell all the bonds, the work is not going to get done on all the projects right away. So you try to sell the bonds as you need the money. So for large capital improvement projects like the, like the main at the high school in the Rose, if you look at the bond debt, you can actually see it correlates to where more bonds were sold. You have to be careful not to get into arbitrage, that you're making interest on money that was pulled out. But we could look at a bond restructuring so that we sold bonds in a way that was more predictable for the community. Hey Cheryl, how are you? For example, you could say we sold X amount of bonds, and those rates are changing. So we'd have to recalc that, but it might be that you could say, hey, we could lock this rate in at 30 cents per thousand assessed. But we have to work with a changing bond market right now. The Fed's looking at increased rates, and so it's, it's a little bit, it would, we need to relook at those, but I can bring those numbers to you. Cheryl, hi. How'd I do? There you go. And is that, would that be the case at either the November 22 or May 23? Okay. Okay. Yes.
From my exposure, repay a bond is going to be repaid by the taxpayers over a period of years. If we borrow the money, we're going to repay the principal and the interest out of operating fund, which means we will have to divert allocation from needed sources to cover that debt. So every time you go borrow 100 million, something has to be cut, because you got to pay back that 100 million with the interest. So every time you go borrow a hundred million, something has to be cut, because you got to pay back that hundred million with the interest. And borrowed money is more expensive than bond money when you borrow it. Likewise, the school district may have an excellent credit rating, but when we start going into debt, our credit rating is going to go down because they're seeing they were not being good managers of the funds that we have. I personally tell you that there's a rule sixty-seven on how much you pay. Uh, if you borrow a hundred million for ten years, the first five years, you're paying nothing but interest. Except that, I'm sorry, I didn't finish it. So when, so when you start thinking of these options, we must also keep in the back of our mind, what do we want to cut? So we can do what we think we want to do. If you're not prepared to cut, be careful how you say what you're going to spend. Because it's not coming in the door without any strings attached. When we get a bond money, and if it's ten million or a hundred fifty-four million or three hundred million, I don't think the public really understood why things cost so much these days. They're living in the old days when they got a house built for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can't build a house for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, if you you go to rent a building today, it, you get a building where you can rent for a dollar a square foot, you're really fortunate. Usually somewhere a dollar and a half, two dollars a square foot to rent a building. And is that building up to current code? No, you just, and that money that you pay rent, it goes right out the door. My process of what I'm trying to share with you is that we cannot take the option of borrowing money so aggressively without having our eye on the cut pie, because it's going to be huge. You you taught, we just did something in the last couple of years that's been a benefit to our students, no fees. For athletics. You start borrowing money, you're going to have to start bringing more revenue in the door. So all of a sudden, those fees that we cut, you're going to have to reinstate them. Those activities that we gave to the students because they were our kids. We're going to have to treat them like they're somebody else's kid and treat them a different way. And I personally, I haven't shared this, but I will share it. We talked about security. My granddaughter got shot at October one, two thousand fifteen at UCC. I take shooting really personal, really personal. You can have a floor. If we borrowed outside of the bonding system in order to put up and increase security and stuff, then it's true, paying back that borrowed money and the interest would be coming out of the same pot as operating funds. But if we bonded, then repaying the bonded money comes out of property taxes and not out of operating funds. It's a significant difference.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I just reiterate tonight, I mean, this is, I think this is why we have work sessions, because we want to just get, we want to get ideas out there. We want to talk about what's happening. So um, I really appreciate the honest candor tonight. I I really, this is going to help us move forward. I also want to reiterate, um, I know we have people that are online and um, you know, this is not, this is not intended to be the decision-making process tonight. Tonight is about idea generation. Um, I will work with uh, our chair and vice chair. Uh, if the board is interested in a meeting before our June eighth meeting, please reach out and talk to them or talk to me. Otherwise, I will come with some proposals at the June eighth meeting um, based on your priority list, as well as the ideas that were presented tonight.
Jared, I'll be honest, I'm not sure that if we were to come back in November with a bond, I think we'd get smoked. I mean, I I just think that clearly our community doesn't have a lot of appetite for that. Uh, and I think they will view that as way too soon, if I'm being honest.
Yeah, I think, I mean, certainly, uh, different dates, um, give provide different opportunities and challenges in elections, right? This is uh, this is not a primary in November. It's the governor's race. There's a lot of uh, strong feelings about that process right now. I think we'll see a high voter turnout. Um, and um, I think there'll be some interest there. So I think you have to take a look strategically on what makes the most sense in terms of the board's priorities to get things done. Um, I mean, one of the things that can be a dilemma is, you know, if you turn too quickly and aren't successful again, then what does that mean in the future? And so those are all considerations the board's going to have to take, uh, be thinking about those. Um, I will come, I'll, I will put your thoughts down into a couple of scenarios that have pros and cons. And we'll spend, uh, if it's not earlier, no later than June eighth, I'll come with some proposals for the board to consider.
Um, I was just, was I understanding right that Cheryl said that if we put the bond forward again in November, that the additional funds would not be available to us?
Yeah, that's what I understood, and I'll need to look at that. I know, I know it's a, I think August twenty-first is the filing deadline. So if we're talking about a bond, you know, as quick as November, there's, there's some things we need to figure out in terms of um, logistics. Is there matching money, for example? Uh, do we need to get a, is there a grant, a tap grant to do a long-range facility, facility spend? Can that even happen? But that'll be part of what we present, what I'll present to the board in 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 June.
I would be open to meeting uh, before the June eighth. You know, if if we iron out some more details, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Bishop's point, I mean, I think part of the problem is that the community is dealing with a substantial depressive, anti-government hostility, political comment.
Just a couple of things. The bond community committee, they're going to be here. Some of them are going to be.
Uh, we've asked, I've asked the PAC to come and um, just give their insights on what they saw. I mean, they're running the yes campaign. Uh, and and they are scheduled to come and and deliver their insights to the board.
That's really important. I I think this work session tonight, I don't know who's listening, um, you know, what was um, some of the comments we got is, and I'm, I'm, so I can understand this, they said mismanagement of funds. I don't know what that, what that means. So uh, I'd like to get, I'd like those folks that said that. I I wish there was a way to communicate with us. I would like to know and and let them know that we have two open positions on our budget committee that we begged people to sign up for. And then we had two people that just didn't show up. So there's, there's opportunities to come and let us know where where we're going wrong, but I think these top three things are going to open the public's eyes. We're serious about, this has to get done. And uh, so I don't want to lose focus that the safety and security stuff, that's gotten to roll. Um, like so, if I was king for the day, the heritage would be dead. And then we'll figure out here, but this, this was a good work session. Thank you.
Let me real quick. I think there's some advantages to actually trying to do this again in November. Uh, if we come up with our own money to pay the eighteen million dollars, put in the best of fuels, and then we ask the community, say, hey, we listened to you. We heard that we asked for too much. We came back, we spent our own money to fix the things that, the safety aspect of this, that was the most important. Now we're asking you for a very scaled back sixty, Seth, very scaled back, sixty-seven million dollars to do the next top two things on our list. We wouldn't have to advertise. We were just playing off of the the whole campaign. It's already there. We're already here. We're already done. So I think that could show, hey, we listened to you. We turned it around, and it's, it'd be bond, you know, point two. It's not, it's a continuation of the original bond, and we wouldn't, uh, we could tie them together, I think, could be a benefit.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And so there certainly is momentum. I've heard from several uh, business leaders and parents that really are interested in in these projects too. This does keep them up at night. And um, so is there any other, uh, I guess, uh, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you. I appreciate, just thank you, uh, the board for being involved. This is helpful to narrow the focus tonight and really to come up with a plan to meet the needs of our our kids in our community. So.
Um, just by way of note, our next meeting is June eighth, but it's at Sunny Slope Elementary School. So don't come here. So we'll see you at Sunny Slope on June eighth. Thank you.